Again, good morning. We have a lot of visitors today. It's very exciting. So I'll keep you note this meeting is being recorded. We typically start with introductions. Al Joe, would you start on your end, please?
I'm Lloyd Gafford.
Excuse me.
Ernie Matuidz, Elk County Borough. I'm just observing today.
All right.
Brian Miller, ARS Engineering Services on behalf of Johnsonburg Borough.
Becky Taylor, Elk County Planning.
Ben Ball with the Phoenix Up and Mations of Pennsylvania.
Emily Anders, Office Administrator.
Carrie Williamson, Deputy Chief Clerk.
Matt Queesonberry, Commissioner.
Fitz Slicker, Commissioner.
Craig Bauer, Commissioner.
Rick Brown, Solicitor.
Matthew Frye, County Treasurer.
Derek Maury, Chief of Provision.
Cindy Whitaker, Juvenile Provision.
Kimberly Frye, Director of Elections.
Scott Adwell, Elk County Prison Warden.
Calvin Moore, IT Director.
Stephen Sunderland, IT Tech.
Nathaniel Schmidt, Counsel.
Michael C. Anderson, Taxpayer, Landowner.
Morning, Mike. And I, do we have someone on Zoom today, Calvin?
Yes, we do.
Can they announce themselves or?
Hello, this is Terry Browen, T E R R Y, on behalf of the William Browen Estate.
Thank you. Good morning. And gentlemen in the corner, you're welcome to come up to the table and sit.
We're gonna wait until taxpayer comments. That's, we're good, thanks.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Okay. So we have an agenda today. I would look for review of the agenda if there's any changes or edits. Bring them forward now, otherwise I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Remove. Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes of the May 1, 2025 Commissioners Meeting. All had a chance to review them and the changes or corrections. Hearing that and call for a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the May 1, 2025 Commissioners Meeting as presented.
Remove. Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. No presentations, no resolutions, no old business. Moving down to new business. We have a request by our planning department. The CBBG Coordinator for the Bergen Street and First Avenue Slum and Light Project in the Johnsonburg Borough. We're gonna do a bid opening. So we have Carrie, our Deputy Chief Clerk here. She will open the video bids. I should note, we have Becky Taylor, our Director of the CBBG, and Brian Miller from ARS, and her Engineering here also.
So this first bid is from Bucktail Excavators. And the total bid is seventy-four thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Seventy-four thousand four ninety-four.
Bucktail Excavators, you don't say that.
Yes. Thank you. S E Rodich, if I pronounced that correctly, excavating. Sure where they're from, sorry.
I'm St. George.
St. George.
St. George.
Yes.
Okay. Their bid is seventy-eight thousand six sixty-five.
Christmas morning.
I'm announced contractors. Johnsonburg.
Be sure.
No, look out, asleep.
God, there'll be another one. Open that.
No.
People's box inside the box. And total of bid seventy-nine thousand even. It's the two envelope. This is the whole. And the last is RJ Valmer, St. Mary's. Total bid is one sixty-one, five hundred.
Thank you. So Becky, would you just give us a, in a nutshell, what this project is? And then I assume we want to use you and Ryan to review the contracts before we make a recommendation.
Yes, this is fiscal year 2023 funding. And it's for a cluster of five condemned residential structures located on Bergen Street and First Avenue in Johnsonburg.
And you'll be removing that?
Yes.
And then those properties move back to Johnsonburg Borough?
They do, yes.
Yeah, the borough has purchased those properties. So they're actually current owners.
Okay.
At this point, no intended reuse.
Okay.
Are they in a row?
Are they kind of?
It's all one corner. Yeah.
Back to back, kind of.
Okay, great. Great. So if you'd like to take the bids?
Wonder what happens on Bergen Avenue.
Yeah, it's about a block up, block up, First Avenue, but we're not able to.
Yep, absolutely.
So next, under new business, we have a request by our probation department for approval of a new, a new one-year contract beginning July 1, 2025, with Central County Youth Center to provide juvenile detention service at a cost of five hundred ninety-five dollars a day. Additional contract fees may apply based on individual circumstances. This contract is not automatically renewed. So today we have Derek Maury, our Head of the Probation Department, and Cindy Whitaker here. Do you want to give us a little bit of information about this?
Yeah, so I appreciate your time. First of all, good morning, everybody. Central County's Youth Center is a secure juvenile detention facility. Across the state Commonwealth, probation departments were really running into a problem with secure detention facilities. A lot have been shut down. Typically, Cindy can attest to this. We use shelter cares if individuals need to be placed. But Central County is one of the few secure detention facilities left in the Commonwealth. I know we have used them in the past. My experience in Potter County, we use them quite a bit. Typically, in the last couple of years, they have been bought out by bigger counties. They would buy the beds, even if the beds were free. We would not be able to use them because those bigger counties would purchase those beds. I think the one way the state is combating this is we're getting into contracts, and if bed availability is there, you need to have a contract for them to determine if they're gonna allow you to utilize that bed. So I know in the past, we would backdate it. If we had to place a kid there, sign a contract, backdate it, and pay. Speaking with Nancy Baker, CYS Director, there is funding available specifically for secured detention. There's a specific line item that we would utilize. I know the cost sounds like a lot, and it is, but even our shelter care are up around six hundred dollars a day for even shelter care. So this is right around the average of what individuals are paying per day, even in shelters, this is secure detention. We do not plan or want to utilize secure detentions. That is not our goal. But it's better to have it and not need it than need it not have it. Because if a juvenile is in need of placement, especially secure because of a severe crime or since a serious crime, if we don't have a detention bed available to us, it throws a strain on our department, on the county, on the courts, on where we're placing that individual, that juvenile, until we can get them in front of the court. So we would look to enter this contract if no upfront, to utilize it. That's when the payments would initiate.
Thank you. So just like with our CYS contracts, these are getting more and more expensive every year. It's astounding that we would have to pay six hundred dollars for one day to house up a young person. But you have to have the contracts in place, like you said. So any questions, comments?
I have just two questions. Where exactly is it?
Belle Fine.
Belle Fine, okay. And then did I understand you correctly that that those beds were almost being bid up by counties that had more resources, where if there was a bed space, they're gonna?
So in the probably the last 10 years, we lost several secure detention facilities, I think, because of liability issues, insurance mandates, whatever it may be. So the few that were left, I'm not putting out names, but bigger counties would actually purchase those beds. And they were allowing that. So there may be five free beds, but a county has them bought. So we would call them to try to place an individual, a juvenile. And they would tell us no, even though there may be an available bed, that county purchased that bed. So I think the state has stepped in to try to push, because of the lack thereof of detentions, now they're allowing everyone to sign that contract, and it's a first come, first served.
I had no idea. That's.
Again, we don't utilize secure detentions a lot, but it's one of those things, if we need it, we need it. If we're talking about serious crimes and individuals that need to be in a secure placement.
I think we've heard about other counties with their struggles, the same thing.
It is.
Almost just calling, like constantly calling and hanging up, calling and hanging up, trying to get somebody to say yes.
Oxford Whitaker can attest to this, and I'll let her speak on it. So yes, when we get those calls, this juvenile may need place. Now we're, we're going down through all of this. Central counties on there, in the last several years, it's been, no, please don't call back for a lot of these places. But again, it puts us in a, because what are we doing with that juvenile now we need time? Cindy, anything to add? What does that?
I think it's pretty well covered. Again, not what we want to have happen, but in the event that we would need it, this wouldn't guarantee us a bed, but it would at least, I think, open up some, you know, to consideration, yes, for us, instead of, I've literally had facilities tell me, like, please don't call back, like, we're not going to give you a bed. So, you know, maybe, I know in the past, we have had contracts with them, but not for several years because of the, you know, frequent times that they have said, no, sorry, we don't, we don't have anything. So we're, we're at least hopeful that renewing, you know, a contract with them after the past several years of not having one, that that might, you know, facilitate more of a consideration, even just having that contract in place, like Chief Maury was describing, so.
And we're legally bound to make those phone calls, and it's frustrating for our officers. I know you're gonna tell us no, but we have to make this call.
Yeah.
You know, we, we need to place this individual. So I'm hoping this kind of at least lets them consider us, if and when that's happened.
Two questions. Where do you house them now, part of this contract?
So Cindy can attest to this, we're using more of shelter care with our not secure facilities.
And the shelter care places will actually take them if they're on a serious?
Some.
Okay. Some, so, okay. Yes. And then the second one is, so the security detention would be like for the direct file juveniles? And they had, and now they're having their hearings before the judge, interest of public safety hearing or whatever it's called.
Correct.
And then, and the court would order them come out of the adult jail, be placed in a juvenile facility. Is that basically what, what this would be?
So typically, if we get that call where allegations or there's new criminal offenses of serious crimes, and we have a list of what the big thirteen, we need to place this kid for the safety of the public and the safety of him or her and their family. We need to find a placement for them.
But that doesn't take the place of the direct file. What I mean by direct file, juvenile age sixteen commits a crime with a deadly weapon, the direct file as an adult.
Right.
This isn't taking, they're still going to our jail.
Correct.
Right? Until that hearing that they have.
Correct.
And the judge orders them.
Makes that determination.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So sixteen-year-old will go to our jail?
Yes, on, on those direct files.
The direct files, they certify them as correct.
Okay.
But the judge has a hearing.
Correct, like, to make that determination.
After, after they're incarcerated in our jail, the judge has a hearing to determine, should they stay in the adult facility, or can they be released to a juvenile secure facility?
Correct.
Yeah.
And if he does that, then Belle Fine, this would bring him one of the places, right?
One of the older places.
So the old doors, okay.
And separately to that as well, it would be for any juvenile offender. If we were to receive a call for, you know, a severe enough allegation, you know, that isn't regarding the direct file determination, we would have someplace to take them immediately and then schedule a seventy-two-hour detention hearing for that juvenile.
So yeah, if we place that.
So we open that up as well.
We place that juvenile, we have seventy-two hours, and it gets into transportation. Majority of the time, our department would do the transportation. We wouldn't have to worry about the transportation fees.
So it'll be in there.
But we have that seventy-two hour that we would have to bring that, that juvenile back for that seventy-two hour hearing from our president.
So this could potentially help our jail somewhat, because now we have a facility that we're contracted with, that the judge could move that, right about juvenile too. Versus not wanting to do it, because we don't have secure detentions, we don't even put them in shelter care because it's a serious crime.
Absolutely.
Yes, it's, and it's very difficult in those direct file type determination situations that other facilities than secure detention for juveniles would even consider.
Right.
You know, so it would give us, like I said, a little bit better opportunity for even the consideration of providing a space for that juvenile.
Is this a private facility, run by the state or by the county? You guys, you know?
I am not aware of that.
It's center, it's from Center County, but state, state, or state ran, like state, like the state oversees its operations and things like that. But it's primarily Center County.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just thank you for the work you guys do too, because that's a difficult job. I'm quite sure, and difficult client. We appreciate it. Appreciate it.
So you're recommending this contract for approval?
Aye.
Look for a motion to approve contract as presented with Central County Youth Center?
So move second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay or go, whatever your schedule allows.
Thank you.
So I see our planning department, CBBG and engineer are back. Floor is yours.
I'm gonna take it. Okay. On behalf of Johnsonburg Borough, we would like to recommend that the Commissioners accept the low bid from Bucktail Excavators in the amount of seventy-four thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars for the project.
Nice competitive bids there. I believe that our planning department, CBBG, has a relationship with most of these contractors, so you're familiar with them.
Yes.
So, okay, so we have a recommendation. I would make a motion that we approve the lowest bid from Bucktail Excavators for seventy-four thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. We have motion in the second. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. The next several, yeah, you're welcome to stay or leave, whatever you prefer. The next several items are requests from our Children and Youth Department. Our Director wasn't able to attend today, but she does have an explanation. So new business number three is a request by our Children and Youth Services Department for a renewal contract with Three Rivers Adoption Council from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, with no rate increase. So Three Rivers Adoption Council is a placement provider that we keep in our stable of providers. So look for a motion to approve that renewal.
Remove. Second.
Motion in second. Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. New business number four, request from Children and Youth Services for another renewal contract with Perseus House Incorporated for shelter and group home services from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, with a six percent rate increase. Again, this is, we know, we hear this every year. Look for a motion to approve on the recommendation of our CYS Director.
Remove.
We have motion.
Second.
And second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. New business number five. Pardon me. Another request from Children and Youth Services for an addendum to our Pathways Adolescence Center Agreement for Group Home slash Shelter at the rates of two eighty-nine oh three a day for transitional, for the transitional living unit, and six hundred and fifteen dollars a day for the shelter unit from July 1, twenty twenty-four through June 30, 2025. We must have someone in there right now. So again, this is an add, oh, this is an addendum. They increased the prices, so that's why the term is. Sure, so. Look for a motion to approve that?
Remove. Second.
We have motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
By the way, you can see six fifteen a day is right in.
Yeah.
Correct.
New business number six. It's another request by our Children and Youth Services Department for a new contract with Outside In School of Experiential Education for Group Home Services from July 1, 2024, excuse me, through June 30, 2025, at the rate of three hundred and forty-eight dollars per day.
Explanation on that, we're good.
Nancy Baker says they are a new placement provider at a rate of three hundred and forty-eight dollars a day for, just to add to our list of stable of providers.
We do have one individual place there right now. Seems to be doing very well.
Okay.
So I would move that we accept the contract with Outside In School of Experiential Education Incorporated.
Say that ten times.
As presented.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve that. I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Excuse me. New business number seven. We have a request by Veterans Affairs for approval of benefits for three veteran burials and two veteran headstone placements. Again, we, this is a very routine thing. Our Veterans Affairs Office does a tremendous job of keeping up with these requests, taking good care of the veterans in Elk County. Look for a motion that we approve these.
Remove. Second.
And a second, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
It's just a request to record the meeting.
We don't need to do anything with it.
Okay.
Right. Sorry to interrupt. I didn't know what that was. I can't even read it from here.
Is, is it a request on our end?
She's requesting to record the meeting, like, burdened here.
The Zoom participant, she wants to record it, that's fine.
It's true.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you. New business number eight is a request by our prison for a new contract with Kara Antinutio RN as a temporary full-time prisoner at a contract rate of thirty dollars per hour. Our full-time county employee nurse is, will be taking some personal leave, and we need a replacement for her.
Cast the warden down here.
Oh, we've got the warden down here. Sorry, warden. I forgot about you.
Good morning.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, long story short, our daytime, Monday, Friday, nurses need to take some time off for personal reasons. Part-time LPNs are unable to fill her hours. So we were lucky enough to meet Sarah Antinutio, who's volunteering, I guess you could say, to step into that position. Be a temporary, it could be six weeks, it could be 10 weeks. But she's willing to accept the majority of those hours, so that'll really help with the coverage at the jail, so we're thankful.
That's great. So it's your recommendation that we approve this contract?
Please.
Sounds great. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Moving on, correspondence. Following correspondence is available in the Commissioner's office for their review, if anybody would like to do so. Under good of the county, we welcome and encourage the public to attend our meetings. Next item, the Crystal Fire Department is celebrating their 125th anniversary this year. Commissioners will be honoring them with the citation later in, in the, later in the year at an event they will be hosting. Commissioner Bauer, anything to add to that?
Yeah, no, just as Commissioner Licker said, Crystal Fire Department had a milestone of 125 years of service. Obviously, they've been in service since 1900, serving the St. Mary's Borough, Bezirka Township, and then the city of St. Mary's. So they're, they're gonna be having a, some, some type of event later in September, and will be attending and presenting. Well, I, I won't be, because I'm gonna be at a wedding in Ohio, but the other Commissioners will be attending, and they'll be presenting a recognition citation of that 125th anniversary of the Crystal Fire Department, so.
Thank you. It's amazing what our volunteers have done for 125 years, and we're happy to acknowledge that and present them with a citation. Next item, County of Elk Business Offices will be closed on Tuesday, May 20th, due to the primary election. We have our Director of Elections, Kim Frye here. Kim, any updates, information?
Yes, the primary is May the 20th. Polls will be open from seven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock in the evening. If they've got, if voters have received an absentee or mail-in ballot, they've deadline to receive those back into our offices, May the 20th, by 8:00 PM. Also, if you're looking for results on election night, please make note that our website has changed to thecountyofelkpa.gov, So make sure that you re-Google our, if you've had it saved, please re-Google it and, and update your, your, your web browser so that you can get our results.
Just, just one, one quick comment for IT guys, because Kim made me think of this. The countyofelkpa.com is not transferred to the .gov either.
Email's not?
It is not for the website. The countyofelkpa.com will not take you to the countyofelkpa.gov. Okay. I will reach out, because I remember you said it was supposed to, and it did do that when you initially launched it, but it's not now. Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks, Kim. Well. Okay, special notice, County of Elk Business Offices will be closed Monday, May 26th, in honor of Memorial Day. Today is the Peace Officers Memorial Day Service. A blue mass will be celebrated at 11:00 AM today at Holy Rose, Rosemary Church in Johnsonburg. So we are hoping to attend that too. Next, we have our America 250 PA update. The Liberty Bell will be returning to the Courthouse Annex. We've finished its transfer route through all 11 of our school buildings. It's been a wonderful journey. The kids were very excited. So now it's coming back home to, to our Annex building, and our Elk County homeschoolers will be working on the bell on, on May 29th. And then we're gonna take our bell on the road. We're gonna be in Old Praise this summer. We're very proud of our Liberty Bell. That is Elk County's birthday gift to the United States of America. So next, we have a very special guest here today. We have Mr. Bernard E. Ben Ball. He is the District Deputy Grand Master of the 22nd Masonic District Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania. That is a big title.
Yeah.
So, so Ben was on his way through today, so I said, why don't you stop in? The County of Elk is also participating in America 250 PA's Liberty Tree Project. During the Revolutionary War, the Sons of Liberty often convened under the nation's original liberty tree in Boston to protest their opposition to British rule and the colonies. This historic tree became a beacon of hope and a powerful symbol of America's fight for independence. In an attempt to quell unrest, the British In an attempt to quell unrest, the British cut down the liberty tree and used it as firewood. In response, patriots throughout the colonies were inspired to designate their own liberty trees as gathering places. While many of these liberty trees have been lost to history, the ones, the ones that we are planting, we will be planting, are propagated from the last known original liberty tree, which was fell by Hurricane Floyd in nineteen ninety-nine, rescued by local landscaper Mark Menard, who revived parts of the original tree. So we have a seedling from one of the original liver trees, liberty trees. And Ben's group has generously sponsored these trees for every county in the Commonwealth. We appreciate that. Only one certified liberty tree will be planted in each of Pennsylvania's sixty-seven counties and must be on public land on a site connected to the revolutionary, Revolutionary War. We don't have any of those because we were not founded yet. Or if one is not available, a historically significant location in the county. We looked at several sites, including our courthouse lawn. We already have some historical trees there. But ultimately, the decision was made to plant the tree on the grounds of the Keystone Elk Country Visitor Center. So the floor is yours, Ben, if you have anything to add.
Thank you. Actually, you covered quite a bit of what I was going to mention with respect to the history of the liberty trees. And the, it's entirely fitting that the Freemasons got involved with this project and sponsored it in that we actually existed here in the United States prior to the revolution, and many of the founding fathers were Freemasons and even Paul Revere and Joseph Warren, for instance, and Joseph Warren sent Paul Revere on his trip, and then he was also one of the first people killed at Concord. Going right on up to, I think somewhere close to half of the signers of the Declaration of Independence were Freemasons. So it's a wonderful opportunity for us to get involved and sponsor this project. And as Commissioner Lekker said, there'll be a tree planted in every one of the sixty-seven counties throughout the state, and we were tasked with, we were basically tasked with the logistics of supplying the trees, getting them moved around, getting them planted. Last Saturday, we planted the tree out at the Elk Visitor Center. It's right outside or just to, right across from the main entrance of the building there. They've got plans to extend a walkway out, sort of a viewing area to be able to see it. And we've got it caged in. Hopefully that'll keep the elk from wanting to browse, or well, they don't browse, but gum it. But as we know, if they want to get to it, they're going to get to it no matter what we did, so we'll take our chances there. So at nine o'clock, we're going to have a dedication ceremony out there. It's a short thirty, forty-five minute ceremony. Later that day at one-thirty, well, we've also planted the Cameron County tree at the Little Museum in Sterling Run. Really nice location right there along the Bucktail Highway or CCC Highway. That road's got several names, but we'll be doing that at one-thirty, and that's in conjunction with the Driftwood or Emporium, Driftwood Emporium Lodge's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary that we'll be celebrating that day. So we would appreciate if, you know, much publicity as we can get, the turnout out to the visitor center at nine o'clock. That, that site was actually selected or suggested by one of our brothers from Ridgeway down here, and we got talking, thinking, well, that probably gets more tourists than anywhere else in the county. And as you say, up here in our part of the woods, pretty tough to find out anything that was going on during the Revolutionary period. So we thought, well, that's a good site where it'll be viewed by as many people as possible. And same way with the museum down there in Cameron County. So appreciate your support and all the help you've been, you know, as well.
Sure. So can I ask, is it an elm tree?
No, it's a tulip poplar.
Tulip poplar.
So it'll, it'll get pretty big.
Thank you. So again, the dedication is on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, at nine A M. at the Keystone Elk Country Visitor Center. Everyone and anyone is welcome to attend.
Absolutely.
I have to say, as coordinator for the County of Elk on America Two Fifty PA Committee, it's been astounding how rich the historical information has been forthcoming. I mean, we think of Paul Revere and, you know, we all know all the stories, but to see a direct connection is really a cool thing. So it's been, it's been a wonderful journey. Okay, please continue to pray for our military personnel, our families and our children, their teachers, all elected officials, and peace in the world. Questions from the press. We don't have the press here today. They let us know they were unable to attend. So comments from taxpayers. Let's start with, in the room.
Hi, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I'm Mr. Manuel Schmidt. I'm here on behalf of Mike C. Anderson, who is a resident in Jones Township. I will keep this for five minutes. As you know, in twenty twenty-two, Mr. Anderson and the county entered into a lease for a temporary emergency radio tower to be placed on his property. Mr. Anderson was compelled last year to file suit against neighbors, the Brownans, for interfering with access to the radio tower, among other issues. On July eleventh and twelfth last year, the commissioners attended a two-day hearing where the court granted a preliminary injunction, requiring the Browns to remove a gate on Mr. Anderson's property and allow access to the tower. The Browns appealed this decision. On April first, twenty twenty-five, Mr. Anderson and I attended oral argument before the Pennsylvania Superior Court to defend the preliminary injunction. I have a copy of the injunction order and appellate brief for your convenience. The court responded favorably to our arguments, although it may be several more months before a decision is issued. Mr. Anderson recognizes the county has decided to move forward building a permanent tower on a different property. Mr. Anderson wishes the county success with this project. However, he has also received communications that the county intends to move the temporary tower before the permanent tower is operational. Anderson has never charged the county a fee for the tower being on his property, and he's litigated the case to ensure the county's access to this tower at its own expense. As somebody who's made a significant investment to protect the interests of the county before this tower is moved, and as a local resident, Mr. Anderson is asking for himself and for his local community members the following questions. One, if the temporary tower is relocated, will signal be equal or better in Kettner, Brearlon, Northern Wilcox, and Twin Lakes areas which specifically testified to during the hearing as places of concern served by the tower in its current location? Number two, if the temporary tower is relocated, will radio communication generally be equal or better for the Wilcox Fire Department as first responders in their primary response coverage areas? And number three, have any first responders been communicated with about the county's short-term plans to relocate and any anticipated downtime? I listened to the comments made by the Browns at your April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. At that time, they stated that the tower was not for nine-one-one operations. Commissioner Gobauer disputed that. Their counsel made the same point to the Superior Court, and it was my first point in response. It's a county tower. It's for emergency operations. We understand the county's anxiety in dealing with the Browns, but we ask for the county to show a healthy amount of result. It is one thing to discontinue the use of the temporary tower when the permanent tower is operational and will provide option coverage to the area. It is another thing to place the temporary tower in a less effective location. Mr. Anderson is asking the commissioners to make the right decision for the right reasons. The temporary tower should not be moved until the permanent tower is operational or unless all the questions that I stated before can be answered confidently, positively, and truthfully. We're not asking for answers today. Mr. Anderson or I can appear regularly and respond to every comment made by the Browns from now until the permanent tower is operational to preserve communications for local emergency responders. My final point is this. We ask that if the lease is going to be determined that a vote be taken at a public meeting, it's an official action that requires compliance with the Sunshine Act, should be fully explained to the public, emergency responders, if there's any effect, good or bad, on the move prior to the permanent tower being operational. The litigation will continue after the county is no longer a party to the case, and a public record of vote would be helpful and necessary to complete the record. Thank you for your time.
Great. So will we receive a written copy of that?
Yes. I mean, I had printed copies. I made last-minute edits, so I'm going to make the final edits, and I'll email it to you today.
Perfect. Thank you. We will be happy to address that. Okay, comments from any other taxpayers? I think we have Ms. Brown.
How are you today?
We are well.
Let me set my little timer for you. So I'm going to want a copy of the documents that Mr. Smith has proffered in the public forum, and I'll have my attorney make that request to you all through right-to-know. I have a real short statement. You can see I put my dad's profile picture up there today. Before I make my statement, in my statement on old business regards your spending, I want to take a minute and recognize my dad, who was a Mason, by the way. As of today, my dad has been gone for twelve hundred and ninety-six days. On every single one of those days, Elk County has occupied his property without our permission. You may have Mr. Anderson's permission, but you didn't ask for our permission. You may have heard about my dad, but none of you knew him, except maybe Joe Dagger, and we'll have to ask him about that someday. Dad used to say, you get the government you watch. So for him today, I'm going to watch. Now I want to talk to you about the money that you spent at the last meeting. You have a county operating at a near-million-dollar deficit. You seem to have champagne taste on a bare budget. For example, you spent P U C Act thirteen money to buy new assessment software. The total of those expenditures was two hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. I'm still not sure how that thirteen, Act thirteen categories permits you to spend money on assessment software. That kind of likely means you're going to be seeing a real estate tax increase for your residents. It appears that your new Jones Township location on Stony Hill Road is ready. We just examined your P A one call for your broadband. So now we kind of know maybe how you're going to pay for that million dollars other than COVID money. You don't just have one temporary tower, you have three. And so one of them is sitting on our mineral lease, and we are told that it is not operating. It is not communicating. I'll cover that here in a little bit. You also have another temporary tower sitting up behind North Central that never seems to get used for anything. The taxpayers paid three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in COVID money to buy three towers. You supplied another tower to a local businessperson who told me you supplied their businesses with free internet. For the ten years that Elk County squatted on my dad's property and this past three years that your tower has been sitting unused on our property, I'm sure we would have appreciated some free internet. I'm not sure how you justify such a blatant misuse of resources and taxpayers, and we will ask you, under oath, to explain yourselves. We noticed that all three of you signed a lawsuit against us. You didn't even spell my name right, by the way, and none of you testified. You just let your underlings do that. So now I'm going to provide you with some new information. An expert touring our property was unable to find any signal emanating from that communications tower, none. An electrical contractor indicated the existing solar panels that were covered by snow the entire year are not providing even enough power to run your camera, if at all. And I'm anxious to hear how long the temporary tower is going to be left there. You left it sit there for eighteen months before you intervened in Mr. Anderson's behalf. So it was such an emergency for those eighteen months, and we'll find out about that when we ask you. We plan to ask Joe Dagger, too. The last thing I want to say is that there is an engineered survey available in the recorder's office. It has been prepared, not from tax maps. It has been prepared from deeds and landmarks. So we look forward to receiving the information from Mr. Schmidt, and I will have my attorney file with your attorney for that, and I will request it also through the right-to-know. There's my timer, so I'll stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other taxpayers? That's funny. Okay, hearing, no other taxpayers? Look for a motion to adjourn.
Rick, Rich have any? I want to make sure.
No, we all fine. Come good this time.
You're never done. Yeah, never done.
We wanted to give you the opportunity. Harry, now, look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Our next meeting will be ten A M. June fifth in the Thomas Room right here. See you then. Thank you. Thanks.